So, Madam Chairman, tonight, straightforward items, I think, for the most part. We'll do a couple of quick updates. Let's do the landmark designation at the end, so we'll go through the items with members here, with visitors here. The area around us is going to get busy here pretty soon, was a concert at Scott Trade Center. And we have a planning commission member or two that need to leave in about forty-five to fifty minutes, so let's be expeditious if we can. Obviously, the materials are pretty complete. PowerPoints have pictures in them. We may try to alleviate a lot of narrative about the pictures and let the pictures do the talking and go from there.
Is there anyone on the phone right now?
No. But as you know, that's how we record ourselves to get on the phone. And I know you will begin with the minutes from April 1st. I will just say that staff was very kind and generous, but they made no notation in the minutes as to how cranky I was last month.
If you want to hold a minute, Ivy is on the other line, which we'll have to cut this off to be able to get her on, and I think the only way to...
Well, I tricked her the information she needs now to be active, so we're beginning.
Right. Right. She can't actually call this line. We're on the conference call, so I can't bring her on.
Can we conference?
And her...
Can we do the more?
You have thirty seconds to make your decision.
Yeah. So, we can't conference?
Yeah, she's gone. I mean, she needs to call in the conference call number, because everyone else does.
We have a call, and we'll try to get Ivy to join us on the conference call number.
Okay. Are we set up now for recording?
Yeah, it's still working. We just don't have Ivy.
Okay. We'll begin the meeting. First item on the agenda, the minutes from April 1st, meeting which were distributed to in our packet which arrived at its time. So, do I hear a motion on this?
No.
Then move to second. Are there any corrections, additions, comments about the minutes? No? Would you read the rolls, please?
Elderwoman Crusen?
Aye.
Chair Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioners Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Aye.
And the motion passes with all present voting yes.
Okay. And as Don has instructed us, we'll move down to the nine items, that will take number four, item number four, Roman. Please, please.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. This is a proposed rezoning of four parcels, seventeen fourteen through seventeen twenty-two North Thirteenth Street, the D Multiple Family Law and District, and the F Mainland Commercial District. The site is about a third of an acre in size. It's located near the intersection of Thirteenth and Howard, a little bit north of downtown in the Old North Tennessee. The existing uses are full vacant lots. Petitioner would like to consolidate those four parcels with the adjacent parcel located in the south in order to develop three million dollar traditional living facilities for men. The petitioner is Sunshine Ministries Incorporated, which owns all of the parcels. The proposed facility would replace an existing facility which is located a couple of blocks to the south, and it's also located a block to the east of a newly constructed building which houses the organization's offices as well as facilities for women. Carol Clarkson, the executive director of the Sunshine Ministries, is here tonight, and she'll be available for questions after the presentation. This is a map of the existing zoning for the area. As you can see, the four parcels are zoned, D Multiple Family. The parcel in the south is F Mainland Commercial. The consolidation of parcels having multiple, or having different zoning districts is not permitted, and that's the reason why the petitioner has requested a zoning. This is a photo showing the four vacant lots that make up the zoning site. Immediately to the east is the parcel that would be consolidated with those parcels. Again, it's a vacant lot with a lot of dumping of pallets and tires. And the entire site that would be developed stretches from this building here to the street there. In terms of adjacent properties, these are all parcels that are located on that same block, because you can see it runs the gamut from industrial uses to residential uses. And some vacant lots across the street pretty much have the same picture, although there are a few more residences. The photo on the left is the newly constructed building that houses Sunshine Ministries offices and facilities for women. And the photo to the right is the emergency shelter that Sunshine Ministries operates a couple of blocks to the south. This building will eventually be replaced by the new facility. This is a rendering that was submitted by the petitioner of the proposed facility. More plan for the first floor, the facilities would include dining room, kitchen, chapel, computer lab, and miscellaneous facilities with the bedrooms on the south floor. The city's strategic land use plan designates the entire site as a neighborhood commercial area, and while social services and home shelters are traditional or classic, commercial uses, they do provide the basic facilities for homeless people as well as people who are in need. In addition, the zoning site is also located within boundaries of two neighborhood plans that were adopted by the planning commission. Downtown Development Action Plan and a plan for the neighborhoods of the fifth ward. Downtown plan doesn't make any specific recommendations for the site that's located on the periphery. In the case of the fifth ward plan, which is in the slide here, the proposed zoning map is actually recommending a rezoning to the F Mainland Commercial District. Review it here tonight. In terms of comments, the rezoning would achieve three objectives according to the zoning administrator. It would continue to allow the applicant to provide high-quality culture services for homeless in low of need, as well as the two other objectives. As you saw, the rezoning is in conformity with the city's strategic land use plan, as well as the two adopted plans, and staff is recommending approval of the rezoning. If I could answer any questions, then this person of Sunshine Ministries is...
Do you need the commissioner to have any comments or questions to ask? Is there a motion?
Move, move. Second.
That we approve the rezoning plan in conformity with the strategic land use plan to find the enrollment. Previous roll been requested. Are there any objections by any commissioners to use the previous roll? And I knew that when Dan just walked in.
If he has no objection.
There's no objection. We accept the previous roll, and that is stands true. Sorry we ignored you, Dan, but...
You may recall, a while ago, we had a similar applicant with a property that had been made available to him from McKee off West Florissant that just didn't pan out. So, this is one that's rezoning, having went with the neighbors.
All right. Next, we're taking the zoning items first round, item number five.
Good evening. Our next rezoning is Decentia and Colorsing, and Patrick Behr, their project designer, is here, and also Barbara Yarney. Decentia brings us a major addition about every five years, and we rezoned this area down here five years ago, and now they're moving a little north from the last one. There's two residential vacant, both of them will be demolished. The site will be collated with the chapel, and then proposing a new ink business. After the rezoning, it's part of the J Industrial, and the zoning is part of the business industrial department. This is a complex, Jefferson Avenue, St. Louis, Morris Marcus, Esco, the zoning areas right here. There are headquarters, warehouse...
Oh, this one is sound right.
Welcome, welcome. We're just going over the rezoning of the Decentia site, just west of the industrial campus. This is an aerial view, this is the corner, Esco and Montgomery, and then there's the two residential buildings. The D Multiple Family of the surrounding area is supposed to be rezoned to J Industrial, and surrounding the site is the industrial building, the first one to ten, that's the large building up here. Across the street, mostly vacant lots, some owned by Decentia. I've watched that for generations. Vacant will be the north, right here. JBL Renaissance has expanded the business division. The strategic land use plan calls for business industrial development, so exactly what they're doing. The zoning administrator recommended the rezoning to J Industrial. Decentia parcel provides the needed expansion for existing industrial campus. Benefits the deed, according to the industrial, using conservative property value. As we said, the proposed rezoning is in harmony with the strategic land use plan. Rita is here, available for questioning, and I'd be glad to answer.
Anyone on the commission have any questions, comments?
I'll just do two things. As you saw on the map, scoring off the map for this to be industrial use was really a hard process over what happened in two thousand and five. And this is such an interesting company with sort of stealth. I wouldn't mind if one of the representatives just gave you a quick little snapshot of what they do in this corner of the city.
Pat Barrett, I'm the engineer, one of the engineers, and thanks for the rezoning that was done five years ago. We were able to construct our first ever natural public plant. The project went well, well enough to where about two and a half years ago, we had another building, three, four, two, that property, part of the rezoned area, so no rezoning was required at that point. We make food colors for around the world. We are the largest plant in our family of companies, which is Decentia Technologies, and thanks to people here, who work for us, who grow here, hope to continue to continue on.
And as you mentioned, you're moving into doing natural colors?
We are.
And your colors find its ways into products that range from?
Well, we do sell to candy companies, M&amp;M Mars is a large customer of ours. We also do pharmaceutical colors, the blue and yellow established, that's ours. And as the market slowly turns more towards naturals, I think we're in pretty good position to service that market. Very large in Europe, you have facilities in Europe, but again, our facility here is the largest by a pretty considerable margin. We employ about three hundred and thirty, about a hundred of those work here in the executive offices, and that is the global headquarters for the group, balance brand of production, shipping, warehousing, everything.
You have any gummy bear customers?
Uh, we probably do, but I'd like...
Gummy bears aren't for you.
I didn't tell you to bring them in.
I know.
He got sprawled by bistsingers.
But we got them. Enough headaches on the commission.
You formerly were Warner Jenkins, and what?
We were. Previous name was Warner Jenkins, and we operated under that name till about two thousand and two. At that point, our parent company, which already changed its name from Universal Foods, to Decentia Technologies, converted us to Decentia Colors as a division.
With this rezoning, what kind of expansion opportunities that you have then?
What we are considering on this site, overlapping the two properties that JBL Renaissance has right now, is a digital ink facility. We do operate a large facility in Switzerland for their same product. We sell that product. Will become more popular in North America, and we have a presence here. Right now, we do resell, but we do distribute some of their products out of our facility to the western hemisphere. This would allow us to actually produce those products.
That anticipated growth of market growth as well?
It would be slowly at first. We might have a couple, say, two to five. What's a little unknown, and we're still discussing, is how many laboratory personnel would be needed to support that production.
We have two.
We're still debating that number within our company.
Two, one, two, three.
Yeah, it originally asked for seven people for the U.C., but I still don't see it to be seven.
So, if I can ask, at this point, when you build that this area, you will be surrounded by Black Scout. What is it?
Actually, we've vacated Elliott, and we have our warehouse on one side of Elliott, Bean Manufacturing on the other side of it.
And looks like there's somewhere they have... Opportunity north Jefferson.
Well, there are some residences, I think that's in CD twenty-three sixty-four, and those are the residents who've done things. Thank you, Madam.
I guess where I'm going is just to understand if you continue to grow, what does the city do to continue to give it the pathway?
I was trying to make this ground here. So, we're... In that corner where you see the paths, it is a part of our facility around House of Walker, my floor, for employees.
And this is your employee part?
That's, yes.
So, you don't feel fine lots, are you?
We try to pick up properties as they become available around us in order to give us a little bit of green space. We've been able to, I guess, kind of stay ahead of the expansion by that property.
And we try to green up a little bit of the area between Jefferson and the camp to be a little bit better of an entrance.
Other questions?
Second.
A mission seconded that we find the petition for rezoning to J Industrial in conformity with the strategic land use plan, and that we recommend it to approve it, and the previous roll's been requested, but we can't call...
It's gonna work.
We have these new people. So, could you call the rolls, please?
Elderwoman Crusen?
Aye.
Chair Stoudt?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Jay?
Aye.
Commissioner Spade?
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer?
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting yes.
Great.
And if any of you are trivia contest questionnaires, or question producers, if you didn't get a few tidbits from that conversation to be in a trivia contest?
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the Hickory and Rutgers Street, St. Louis.
Yes. We've had two rezonings on St. Louis campus in the last two months, and this is Medical Campus, and Dan Trump is here, the project coordinator, coordinator of the English University. The site, the zoning site, is three and a half acres. This is the city block, it's the entire city block except for the two facilities on Spring. And the plan is to consolidate that, this parcel to B, also owned by St. Louis. This looks like a street, but it's actually a right of way, and I think the name is still coming up on the map, but it's actually, you know, one large parcel of land. And the proposal is to rezone from J Industrial to H Area Commercial, like the frontage on South Grand. This would allow the English University's development of hospital and handbag facilities here, uses, this is the medical center. This is an area on the site, and this is the development site. You see, it's just north of English University Hospital, plus streets of research, and this is the zoning amendment, combining it with the B. The front portion is already zone A, so it's most of the site is here. This is a view, these are views from the corner of South Grand, this is a view from here, so the three zoning areas, area from J Industrial to H, and then match the H along South Grand, which, if you remember right, we rezoned the H in the main campus a few months ago. In the vicinity of the south, of course, is the university hospital. It continues back to the south, there's some service facilities and an office building. And there's just two properties fronting on Spring, and one's Young and Hall. And among the north side is a lot of residential, actually, there's a lot of vacant land also owned by the university, and it's basically like nine houses among the vacant. And the hospital, which literally would be a hospitality house, it's unchecked, it's just the rest of the brand. There's also vacant land to the north owned by SLU, and this is Missouri Belt Company and two big sites, which I think everyone remembers from a few years ago. Strategic land use plan, this entire site and the development site is an institutional preservation and development area. The zoning administrator recommended the rezoning to H Area Commercial, but this is a new opportunity to provide additional healthcare services to the immediate and adjacent areas and bring this in from the building. It's also in conformity with the strategic land use plan, and staff recommends approval of the zoning. Happy to answer any questions. Dan is also here. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. This is Ivy.
Go ahead, Ivy.
Okay, St. Louis, you're really gonna build a hospital now?
Yes, we plan on it.
When is it gonna start, or when is it gonna be finished?
They're working on the drawings right now.
Mm-hmm. And so, when do you expect to have it finished, you think?
Um, probably start in the next, the next year.
Mm-hmm. Starting the next year, and the construction period, you believe it's how long? I mean, I know it's in the...
About two years.
Two years? So, by two thousand and eighteen, we should see something, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause we approved this how many years ago? Fellow commissioner?
Well, we, yeah.
We approved it different time, yeah.
Are you talking about when we were addressing the Peaveley site?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this... Really with that?
Yeah, it's all part of, I think, a master plan, so...
That was a wild goal, right?
The area has been demolished since then, and that's the area that they're wanting to rezone to match the rest of the camp.
Okay, but we're gonna see hospitals, we're gonna see jobs, we're going to see, you know, all you, you well-paid crew, medical professionals, et cetera, contributing to the earnings tax base of the city of St. Louis. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, I wouldn't be wasting my time here.
Okay, because you are my alma mater, all right? So, I say that, but I'm voting, I voted before, and we're all for it, okay? The control was for it when your dear father, Beyond D, was still there. So, so, the new president, what is his name?
Brett Pastello.
Yeah, tell him we wanna see it, okay? We're serious.
Yes, I'm a part of the construction department, it's job security for me, I wanna build it as well.
Okay, then, 'cause I got a lot of friends who worked at St. Louis U's positions. I want their money continually, okay? All right, thank you.
Sounds good, maybe we can become friends.
Uh-huh.
You can say that back.
Okay, I want all those people making all that money. We want the money, nothing moving to the county. So, that's my vote, aye. Okay, go ahead.
Control is all.
Money is what matters. You pay my salary and part of those people sitting here too. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ivy.
I guess my question was, kind, not quite like Ivy's, but I was curious, is with this rezoning, does this help you kind of complete the puzzle all the way down to the Peaveley or all the way down to Shoto? Or is this just kind of, the construction is just for this area here?
Construction for this is just for this area here.
Okay. So, I guess, to Ivy's point, this project here that's dedicated to kind of this major block area, we're not gonna see any activity down to Shoto, the ambulatory...
Not yet. There's still some properties we're still trying to acquire, which is to the north there, but yeah, eventually, we plan to develop that area as well. But for right now, the ambulatory care center is just for this site. We plan on building it there and having a parking lot as well on that site that we're talking about today.
Is that the same project that was going to be on the Peaveley site?
Yes, it is.
Any other questions, comments?
So, we won't see any activity on the Peaveley site for some time then, or?
Till they, till they give me the money to start working on drawings for that site, I can't, I can't guarantee anything.
What's your holdup? Didn't we give you all a tip and all that good stuff? What do we do, Don?
I don't believe they have a tip. Remember, one of the things that they've been doing in the big picture is working through issues with tenant, their hospital provider. We do expect right here from SLU that the construction guy is saying they're gonna break ground this year, but they're also trying to look at doing an overall redevelopment plan that would include portions of both the seventeenth ward here and the nineteenth ward, and go all the way up past Shoto to Metro Microtown. We haven't seen that yet, but they've been thinking in those terms.
We would not, sorry, I may have missed, we would not pass Shoto for the ambulatory care center.
But the redevelopment plan in working with their partners in the neighborhood and... But the redevelopment plan in working with their partners in the neighborhood.
Any other questions or comments or questions?
Motion approval.
Sir, second to the motion. The move is seconded that we find the petition for rezoning to H Commercial.
Go ahead, we're into previous role.
That we find that is in conformity with the land use plan and we recommend approval.
Previous role.
Previous roles been requested. Are there any objections from many of the commissioners of the use of previous role? There are none?
No. All right, aye.
We'll take the Chapter 99, West End.
Yes, this is the Chapter 99, lighting study and redevelopment plan, 4526 to 4628 Olive Street redevelopment. The site is about two and a third acres in size, consists of nine parcels. It's located on the south side of Olive Street, in the central west end, a couple blocks south of Delmar and one block east of Euclid Avenue. The site is also located in the central west end of the historic district. The existing uses are four vacant commercial buildings, two parcels that are currently being used by Bowlett Farms, which is a nursery located on the other side of Olive Street between vacant lots. The redevelopment plan is proposing a two-phase development project. The first phase is a $6.2 million development project that consists of the renovation of two of the commercial buildings and the destruction of a four-story residential addition above one of those buildings. The prospective developer is Rothschild Development Limited, which is a developer that is located a couple blocks away from this site and has done numerous development projects throughout the central west end neighborhood. The second phase of the project includes the expansion of Bowlett Farms and possibly some additional residential construction. This is an aerial photo of the redevelopment area and the immediate vicinity, although it's got a great location in the central west end. I dare say this is a struggling area and somewhat underutilized currently. On the left, both of those show buildings that are currently owned by Rothschild Development. A photo on the left, vacant building that would be converted into four apartments. The photo on the right, the ground floor, 3,000 square feet of that would be used for commercial space. The rear of the building would be used for parking, and there would be a four-story addition that would be built above that building. There are two additional vacant commercial buildings that are in the redevelopment area, both of which are vacant, both of which have attached surface parking lots. The five remaining parcels in the redevelopment area are all owned by Bowlett Farms, and as you can see, some of those parcels are currently being used for agricultural purposes. In terms of adjacent properties across the street from the redevelopment area is Bowlett Farms, which includes an outdoor storage lot where they have some of their nursery items, a retail shop, and a popular restaurant, Cafe O Sage, and its parking lot. Further down the street is an interesting collection of buildings. Again, this is part of a historic district. It includes the Prince Hall Grand Lodge and the Taylor Olive Building. And immediately east of the redevelopment area is the Lister Building and the side yard associated with it. This is a rendering that was submitted by the prospective developer. The building on the far left would be converted to residences. The large one-story building would have ground floor commercial in the front, parking in the rear, and that's the residential power proposed for it. This is another perspective, I should note with Betsy's appearance here, that the preservation board approved the design of this building, I think it was three months or so ago, and granted it preliminary approval. In terms of the city's strategic land use plan, it's designated as a specially mixed-use area, which encourages a wide mix of uses. The redevelopment plan is proposing special and commercial uses as well as expansion of the nursery. So the redevelopment plan is in conformity with the strategic land use plan. It provides for the use of up to ten years of tax abatement, but no evidence of need is necessary. My staff is recommending approval of the lighting study and redevelopment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
And Matt, Brenda, or Blackline, Mark's growing up.
Mark, I'm sorry. Of Blackline, which is the general contractor for the project, is here as well, if you have any questions.
I have a question, Lyda, you're there, right?
No, Lyda left.
Well, Lyda, it's in the Twenty-Eighth Ward, but Lyda has the best excuse ever for why she had to leave. Her son at 6:30 now is throwing out the ceremonial first pitch at the baseball game.
That's great. Okay, I was gonna ask Lyda, it's in her ward, and what the developer's there, Rothschild, right?
The representative is from the general contractor associated with the developer, yes.
Who is that? Who is the general contractor?
Blackline.
Okay, you all have some minority participation, correct?
Correct.
Uh, who is?
Sorry?
Who's your minority participation on this project?
We haven't completed the construction documents yet to put it completely out the bid, but we've already talked to Bam, Brian Murphy, as well as Scape for the plumbing. We've actually had pretty limited interaction with subcontractors so far, just as we don't have construction documents yet. But we have, we have engaged those two subs already, and so I think we've got a good jump start on the process.
Okay, and the architectural firm is who?
Arcturus.
Who is that, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Arcturus.
Arcturus, do they have some participation?
W V.
Yeah, that's them.
Women-owned business.
Women-owned business, I know they are, but there are M Bs too. Just highly recommend that you all look at some local minority architectural participation as well. Okay, I'm sure it's built where you are right now. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you Ivy. Any other commissioners have any questions?
The Chapter 99 area is much bigger than this space. Just explain how the tax abatement works on that, on the undeveloped part of the site.
My understanding is that up to ten years of tax abatement would be provided to the developer. It's unclear as to who the developer would be, although all of the parcels but for one are associated with parties who own Bowlett Farms. There's one parcel between Rothschild's development project and the remainder that apparently is up in the air.
But on those parcels not in this phase of construction, the tenure begins when they complete a project on that site.
That's correct.
And are designated to develop, but that, it's an area that's being, the western portion of this block that's being incentivized with a redevelopment plan and one project happening in it, as opposed to at the moment a set site and giving them tax abatement. So further development here might be goose by this redevelopment plan, would be in accordance with the redevelopment plan, or may or may not take advantage of being designated to get tax abatement.
Different projects, not the same.
Yeah, just, you know, Roman showed you the pictures. This is one of those interesting sort of funky areas. The geography's different because of the angles of the streets. There's a portion that's a historic district. It's, part of it is in the Eighteenth Ward, part of it in the Twenty-Eighth Ward. You see some of the pictures of the storefronts, some of them are used. It's really one of those sort of classic edge areas, good to see some development.
It's terminated right there by Central Crest too, which is that old Theodore Lane.
There's a whole lot of that, but unfortunately, it's struggling currently, but I think Bowlett Farms has attracted a lot of community to the last.
Commissioner Sage has made a motion that we approve.
I agree.
And move and seconded that we recommend the Chapter 99 lighting study and redevelopment plan and recommend it to the Board of Alderman for approval. Could you read the role, oh, any other questions or comments?
No, I would just say, this is Ivy, if it's part of its entire ward, I highly suggest that you identify some more minority participation here in Kennedy. Okay, that's it.
Okay. The role, please.
Sure. Sheriff Stoudt.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Powers.
Aye.
Commissioner Pinkston.
Aye.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Spade.
Aye.
Commissioner Visentainer.
Aye.
Motion passes with all present voting aye.
Can we move back up to the list of the agenda, which is landmark designation for Maya Angela's birthplace?
We're gonna do our tag team. You get all of the visitors, PDA in one place. This is a landmark designation, and it's for the single-family residence at 3130 Hickory Street. And this is Shoto and Compton, Saint Louis first executive center. It's two blocks south, Shoto, and a half block east of Compton. It's a brick single-family home built in 1888, but it sits among contemporary houses built in 2000. There's, you can see the footprint of typical contemporary houses, but there's also other 1880s and 1890s houses. And this block is really on the edge of the neighborhood. There's a Amerunewi substation here, a pounder, there's some vacant lots, so there's perpetual there and a lot of things that have happened with this house.
So we're back in Compton Hill, and we were the last landmark we brought to you, which is the Compton Hill Baptist Church up there.
It's very hard.
Yeah, we're just pointing out. And Compton Hill was this self-contained black neighborhood with places to work, lots of churches, corner stores, very densely developed. And so we're looking at the individual building because unfortunately, the neighborhood can't really convey what it was like when Maya Angela was born there. On this landmark petition was initiated by Ms. Rhonda Wright, who owns the property and uses this as a residential rental. Also involved have been Alder Woman Davis from the very beginning, and members of Maya Angela's family, all who are supportive of this effort. And taking a look at the house and using the history we had and adding to it, and of course considering her great presence and personality, particularly here after, unfortunately, she died, all the attention focused on her hasn't been at that time. You know, it's very easy to make the case that this building as her birthplace has significant character and value for the city of St. Louis. Like, to claim her as its own, although she's been around very much time here, in fact, she lived here the first three years of her life, and then spent most of it with her father's family, her father's mother in Arkansas, and then she came back, and then a couple blocks, she was held by Carolyn Street for, and was spent a school year in Saint Louis in the 30s, actually remembers that time better. It was a multi-generational household. This was the home, 3130, was the home of Angela's grandparents or mother's parents. And they, and what's interesting, this is a very densely developed block front, mixed buildings for a multifamily flat building, which was one single-family residence on that block. And her family, grandparents, were successful enough to own a single-family dwelling, and so it's that sort of ability for it to stand out and be a little lighter than its neighbors' blocks now, but still, it does look very much the way it did when she was born there. Has its side entrance. You can see it here in the setting with modern buildings on both sides and on the street. There are others, like the rooms as they pointed out, but it's a very mixed neighborhood. So she moved back to, the school she went to was the older school, which has been replaced by 1950's, St. Louverture School, but in the neighborhood as well. So this was where, when she was in Saint Louis, her life was centered here in this house and this neighborhood.
The significant rehabilitation of the property occurred in 2004, and I think it's interesting that the houses on each side were constructed for. So this proposed landmark designation will advance the physical development of the city in two ways. First is adoption of the landmark plan and landmark standards to help ensure that inappropriate alterations to the house, you know, would be discouraged in the future. I guess we get to the point of it is that then we continue to act as a present, as a family president, as a thing. As Betsy pointed out, the Compton Hill Missionary Baptist Church was nominated in 2013, and this really helps define the western edge, there's opportunity areas to the north, we don't quite know what's gonna go in there. And the area to the west has become Saint Louis University Medical. So this is, it used to be in the middle of the neighborhood, but now it's kind of the western edge. Planning staff finds that, you know, together it helps define the neighborhood. It's a strategic neighborhood preservation area on the south side of Hickory, opportunity area, and then this is institutional, it's the church. The proposed city landmark designation is in conformity with the strategic land use plan, which encourages new and renovated housing, which obviously is a flock hand. Proposed landmark designation will have positive impact on the physical development of the city, and we're asking to ask the PDA director to notify the preservation of the county commission director. The planning commission acts as an advisory body to the preservation.
Is the house currently a residence?
Yes, it's, it's, it's over in Illinois now, she has a further field. She has plans to keep it as a rental property, the standards we developed for, do address the prime age or whatever in case it would be used as one of an museum or some other kind of use related to remembering Miss Angela. I think it'd be cool if it was a residence for a visiting scholar or something like that, but so far it's her rental income property.
Will she put a plaque on it or anything with this designation?
I don't know, we don't, it would be her choice. Most of our landmarks don't have plaques, we don't have that programmed very strongly here, but she could, I think it says she could put a plaque on the building or a monument sign in the front yard.
Other questions?
Motion approval.
Second.
Mm-hmm, can you second them?
Previous role.
Previous roles been requested. Are there any objections? Is Commissioner here or Ivy on the phone to the news?
No, I have no objection.
Seeing no objections, hearing no objections, so we understand the truth. Thank you. All time, yes.
So Madam Chairman, the other, the delegated items, happy to discuss either here or after. And then the informational item on the zoning notifications. And then the informational item on the zoning notifications. Dick showed his master sort of inventory chart last time, and Michael showed some pictures of examples. We're conning to do two things. Scrutinize the chart of what other cities deserve to doing under their laws, getting their examples and getting other sort of creative examples of the physical posting. Short three people is a little challenging to get that done on a timely basis. And then we've been, I've been loaned somebody that's half my age, Patrick Smirks, I'm looking at here, in that I've tasked him to sort of look at best practices around the country where there's media use for, and social media use and other ways electronically getting the word out about development projects. So he's working on that, I hope to know more about that by tomorrow. And so next time, unless it's a real full agenda and staff's pretty jammed up, we'll go through the matrix again, we'll show some displays of examples and begin to structure some decision making.
Great. And thanks for the putting out the information on it.
So will this be a recommendation then of the planning commission to the board for changes or what do you perceive it to be?
I think there'll be a big discussion about it here and certainly you'll take what we discuss.
And so part of it is a reminder of where the budget comes from for doing these things.
Right.
And part of it, part of it is a dust-off, and part of it is what are good changes to make and think about the budget type of stuff.
And new technologies are new, but maybe for us, too.
We'll participate in that discussion.
Any new business that anyone has?
The other is just that we talked about last time that I'd also send a letter to remember the, you know, the conditional use process would occur for a convenience store, which is part of a law, part of a change, the ordinance, that we concluded so the neighbors will have a direct say in that convenience store that we talked about at Marcus. And we had some discussion items about communicating some of our thoughts about that. There was not yet a recommendation from the Alderman, so this is the draft of a letter.
And I included some photographs taken at the site, which you all requested also. And I think with the photo number two, there's a white wall with them, behind that is, especially in photo three, you can see that there's a small retaining wall and a stockade fence. And their proposal is to include that former residential parcel in the gas station site and build a taller retaining wall and fence. So that's where some of the language is dealing with the views from the single-family house. This is an occupied house. I know it may look, it has metal shutters that you can close and open, but it's occupied. There's a warning about the dog, so I think there's several occupants and they, this is being used as a side yard part of the residence now, but it's owned by the gas station.
Another thing from our tire kicking on that process is some consideration of how the NSOs might be able to be a little bit more helpful in some of the neighborhood context information that we'd like to know about.
I did, I see there's mention here about the trash dumpster. Was there any, it seemed to me, just looking at that plan if I recall, it would be really advantageous to use the alley for a trash pickup and off the street where the porch is. Is there, can we be a little bit more specific to that in this letter or at least recommend that?
It's a recommendation, so why not?
Sure.
You led much of the discussion about the retaining wall height and the fence above it. And so, that was an issue, but then how it relates to the alley is, put the dumpster in the alley?
Yeah, they had the dumpster sited on the street side, the porch side, and it's comfortable enough to make that switch. I don't know why the designer sited it that way.
We'll polish that up and pass that along. Thanks for doing it, Dick. Dick did the work. Thanks for doing it, Dick.
So can someone briefly on this that passed last time? The supervisor, is there a recommendation follow-up letter?
Yeah. We have a 45-day clock to deal with rezonies. And remember, much of the detail of rezoning occurs at Mary Shop when it came in. But this had some aspects that we were quite concerned about rebuilding to the neighbors and this geography of the wall.
They provided a site plan and I think some of it, the convenience store is moved to be next to the house, so in some ways it blocks the view. And this mess, you know, so a lot of the noise and light is on the other side of the door now. So I think there was general consensus that this was gonna operate much better and the concern was the specifics of the design and the planning commission was looking at the rezoning and, you know, they were nice enough to show a site plan, they didn't have to do that, but technically those issues we don't have to, we may comment.
But I think it's our job, though, is if you rezone or rent that's a lot, the idea is not to continue creating decay down the face, you know, the face of the block. And so I felt that in kind of the protection of that neighborhood, that we had to have that discussion to make sure that that would be upheld, that you're gonna have a vacant home right next to the gas station.
So two things, one, yes, fine, that is a role in our system for Mary's stand to do when it comes in. And then second, what we sort of realized is that this particular use has the effect of Alderman Home. We did a modification on convenience stores in particular, so that there is a conditional use in these neighborhood contexts for convenience stores. And therefore, that public part that might not show up at the Board of Aldermen hearing will be at that conditional use hearing. Much of our concern at the time was about some designs of convenience stores, so we said, what the hell, let's send this letter to the, to the conditional use process. The Alderman on his own is, is a tire kicking and evaluating, but it gave us a chance to deal with it in the 45 days.
Did you have any conversations with the people at this?
No.
Okay. The dog's gonna do it like it.
That's one of the, that's what I said, one of the reasons is a little.
One of the old photos aerial has a blue tar on it, it's been damaged at one point, but other aerials show it later than that.
So they have it shining, I should get engaged in this.
But we don't know that it may or may not have with the Alderman. That's one of the reasons why I have a little tire kicking in the back of my head of how to involve the NSOs a little bit more proactively in that type of thing. They'll, therefore, those, because of the conditional use, it will be posted and they'll have two opportunities. The Board of Aldermen for the rezoning and the conditional use for a new convenience store, to get to the neighbors.
So if you just change the bit about the dumpster?
It's not a lot.
Any need for any further discussion?
Not this time.
You know the business, I, anything of motion to adjourn?
Okay.
And move to the table. Always in favor?
Aye.